I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 21st session of Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of the April 7th meeting. Just have one comment. Says I'm vice chairman. The motion of discussion, up to minutes.
Make the motion to approve.
Aye. All in favor, let me know in a second. Aye. Any opposed? Same saying. Okay, first item on the agenda is case file number 2022-03-Z. This is a public hearing to consider approval under request of Midland 256 Rampart LP at all owners and LCA agent to amend the uses on planned development retail. This is on lot 6, block 27, North Central State's fifth filing. Property located at 6,000 East Ridge Road. Just here.
Thank you. The property is located southeast of the intersection of northeast Loop 338 and East Ridge Road. The site is zone planned development, residential retail, and is occupied by a retail office center. Land use in the area consists of retail office development and apartments to the north, residential development to the south and east, and recreational open space to the west. The applicant is Midland 256 Rampart LP at all owners and LCA agent. The purpose of the request is to amend the existing planned development retail in order to allow a donut coffee shop be allowed on the property. City council approved the planned development retail in August of 1998 with the condition that specific developments, efforts, i.e. building setbacks, height, parking, fencing, landscaping, be adhered to. Retail uses be allowed on the property were restricted to those on the attached list. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the existing planned development retail for condition number two to include this fault. One building with retail space approximately 2,000 square feet and a donut shop with approximately 2,000 square feet. The other conditions of the planned development will not be affected by the proposed amendments. Twenty-three notices were sent out via regular mail on April 8th. One notice was returned, two, the protests were received, and one, I'm sorry, no, written approvals. Planning staff analysis of the amendment request is that a donut shop and retail space at the site will meet the land use criteria for the city of Odessa for retail and service uses to be located at the intersection of major highways and Collector Street. Staff is of the opinion that a donut shop and retail space use is compatible for this location and has no objection to the request as present.
Okay.
Well, with that, staff can answer any questions.
Other any questions or staff? I would note that this is a public hearing, so that if there's anyone in the audience today that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter, I would let you know that you could come forward one at a time at this time. I need for you to give your name, but I don't think we have the address again. I think we start with the applicant.
Thank you, Chairman Peacock. My name is Bruce Langrath, and I'm counsel for the applicant and also the landowner of Midland 256 Rampart LP. And in my capacity as counsel for the landowner, I want to inform the commissioners that the request of amendment is certainly supported by the landowner, but also want to make note that, just to be clear, since we are talking about the entire shopping center, that this amendment has been requested and would only apply to lot 6 within that development. So there's no request to change to the remainder of the shopping center. I do know that there are some of the developers who are here who probably would like to share a few more details with you, the commissioners, but I just wanted to signify the approval or the support of the amendment from the existing landowner. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll let the other speaker.
Do I have any questions in something?
Thank you.
Chairman Peacock, thanks for having us today. I'm Spencer Robnett. I live in Midland. This is Paul Anderson, my partner. He lives in Midland, too. We are not the owners of the property, but are under contract to buy this corner property to develop a donut shop. A couple of years ago, we decided to get in the donut business, most like a lot of people did in West Texas when oil prices went down next to nothing. And so we've opened two donut shops in Midland, ship their donuts. It's a franchise out of Houston, been around for 75 years. And that's our intent with this property here, too, is to build, develop a donut shop on the east 2,000 square feet and then build additional retail on the west 2,000 square feet on this district here. So anyway, glad to answer any questions about the donut shop and appreciate your time and consideration of the request. Thank you very much.
What would be the hours of operation?
We're open 13 hours a day. So we open at 5:00 in the morning and we close at 6:00 p.m. We found there's an afternoon donut crowd. A lot of donut shops don't open in the afternoon, but there's a lot of kids that come in and a lot of folks coming to donuts in the afternoon, believe it or not. So myself approve.
Any idea what the traffic impact will be?
Great question. I don't believe there'd be a significant traffic impact. The reason we're interested in the site for a donut development is because there is heavy traffic there already. So I don't believe there'll be much new traffic to the location. Our hope is that the folks that are on their way to work are coming from Midland or Odessa or north or south on 338 will peel off and go back on their way on their commute. So I don't see a huge draw of new traffic, sir.
A few years ago, we had an issue of a restaurant, not necessarily on that location, but in the shopping center. And I recall some of the concern had to do with smell. Can you address that one?
Sure.
That might have been an issue. Do you have any equipment that would reduce?
Yeah, great question. We operate two donut shops in Midland now. Invite you to come see them if you need to at any point in time. But we found the smell related to a donut shop, specifically the vent hood operations of the donut shop, really centered around how much you change your grease. Our grease is changed every week in these donut shops. And so when you get a real heavy smoke or grease or vent through your vent hood, we think most of that is related to not changing your grease frequently. Ours are changed every week. In addition to that, our two donut shops in Midland, one of which operates much closer to residential addresses than the one that's being proposed here, have not received a single complaint on the grease side or the smell as it relates to grease or grease vent coming out of that donut shop. And then maybe the other thing we have going for us in light of the grease and the smell of the vent hood and the operation at this shop is, you know, southern prevailing wind most of the year. We think most of this vent stack and smoke and grease will push to the north, from south to north with those south prevailing winds is our thought. So we've thought about it, but that's kind of our experience today with the grease and the smell of the vent hoods.
My memory's not like it used to be, but one of the other things I think I recall is a question about trash and smells from the dumpster. Where will dumpsters be located?
Sure. So again, just reiterating what Mr. Langrath said, we would have private dumpster on-site, which is just this northwest, I think, track six on your plat there. And so the dumpster we would have would be on the south side of our shop, not in the alley of the existing retail store. So it would be further away than the existing dumpsters as they exist. Those would be enclosed in a cinder block wall with a swinging gate fence and private dumpster service for the trash, sir.
I think that would be a traffic block, so in the alley, if that's that one.
I think so.
After that, we're going to have more traffic.
I think the restaurant at that time, the thought was it was going to be located in the other buildings along the backside of that.
Oh, in the existing strip, the previous application.
The other space, is it going to be restaurant or?
No, no, yet. I don't have a tenant for that yet. Certainly could be, but I don't have a tenant picked out for that yet. We're pretty early in the planning process here.
Are you guys seven days a week?
Yes, sir, seven days a week. Yeah, our first two employees, the bakers, get in 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning, every morning. Everything's baked fresh inside that store every day. Something to note, too, on the vent hood, about 40% of our business are actually baked goods, so baked cinnamon rolls, baked kolaches, those kind of things. So almost half of our business doesn't actually get vented through a smokestack or through a vent hood at the restaurant. There's something to note there.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you. Okay, thank you, guys, very much.
Is there anyone else in the audience today that can't speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter? Yes, we can come forward.
Mr. Peacock, just give us your.
Yes, sir.
I'm David Moskinson. I live 1, 2, 3, third house down, yeah, third house down, back up south of this proposed donut shop. I guess my question, I need some clarity. One, is it's new construction on that corner? I used to do golf balls for my backyard. I don't know where that's at. And then the existing building, you guys bought it or own it or?
No, sir. The existing building ownership with the existing retail would stay with the existing owner. We would not buy that.
Okay, so all you're going to do, all you're proposing to put a donut shop on that lot in the corner?
Yes, sir, far northwest.
One more, that coochie pad is there in the parkway.
Right, the dirt pad there, that's not that kind of pretty of it.
Okay, well, I had, I was a little bit confused, but I didn't know if the existing property directly behind me, there's an alley between me and that property, if that was part of this development or not. So new construction, I don't oppose. I know I turned a card in instead of did, but new building, I don't oppose.
I'm trying to say that again.
I do not oppose.
You're not opposed, okay.
And you did.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience today which is speaking in favor of or in opposition? I know that there was one over the card that was being, I don't see that person here. Okay, I will close the public portion of this discussion. I do have an initial question to the staff that has come to me. Question was just now raised about what the other use may be in the other building. And I think as presented, if referenced, the staff doesn't object to a donut shop and a retail space. But that other space technically not limited?
It would still be limited to the current list of uses. The only thing lit that we are adding to the list would be the donut shop slash coffee shop.
So if we approve this, that adjacent site would still be retail?
Yes.
And only this building would be subject to the revision and could be a donut slash coffee shop?
Yes, that is not the way that it was explained and presented, but yes, that restriction can be placed on just that corner lot.
Mr. Langrath, I don't have the glasses on, but I see some. Is that what you anticipate?
I'm a partner with Spencer Robnett. One of the things that, as I've met some of the folks that were, that live in the locations. I missed you all yesterday. I came by. And frankly, just so everybody knew what we were doing, the biggest thing that we want to, I guess I want to emphasize is the fact that this is, we want to keep it within the confines of the business hours. We're not trying to do something that's late. We're not trying to do anything that's a donut shop that's going to be, you know, it's at 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The only other use I can see that would allow us to have more options, if we were to lease the space, would be like a Jimmy John's or some other sandwich shop or something of that nature. But that's something that we could, that we would talk about. If we need to be limited, our goal is to build a, to build donut shops all through West Texas. This site's a good location. I actually had a conversation with the mailman. He has to go all the way across the loop to get to other places to eat. And so we wanted to have the options of doing that. We have no intention of creating something that's going to be into the later hours that would be similar business hours, if that helps.
Well, it helps, but I noticed that in our paperwork, the application reads 1 million retail space of 5,000 square feet and a donut shop.
Yes.
So I think that there would be an imposition of the current restriction on the other side of the property.
Okay, there would be restricted to that retail.
To the current P.
Right.
Which restaurants?
Yes. Now, what they could do, once they do finalize that second tenant, they can apply for another.
That's not a problem. If that's what we would, our goal again is to build a donut shop there, and so we would be okay with that. If something changes in the future as we develop a project, we would come and present again the specifics of that.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, just, commission, any other questions or staff? Want clarification on anything? And ask for discussion and/or motion?
I make the motion. Will you approve case file 2022-03-Z as presented?
Here's your second discussion. Talk for both then. All in favor, let me know in a second. Aye. Any opposed? Same saying. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on, case file number 2022-18G. This is a public hearing, consider approval of three lot addition, three plat, lot 24 and lot 15, backwood terrace addition, second file. Property located at the intersection of Conover Avenue and West 25th Street. Just a minute.
Thank you. The site is a single family, three, and is currently vacant. The land use surrounding the applicant location is single-family residential, which regards east and west, and a school to the south. The applicant is Hector Rodriguez, owner, Hector Rito, LLC consultant, and the purpose of the replat is to create seven lots for residential assets. Plating comment for sensitive consultant on April 12th for review. Commission action is requested on the following item. Adjust lot lines to allow 50-foot width for each lot to meet minimum requirements for residential development per planning. Water, sewer, paving, and drainage plans need to be submitted for review and acceptance per Public Works. An improvements agreement will be required per Public Works. Impact fees will be due at the time of building permit issuance and utility connections per Public Works. And finally, Conover Drive on the plat is actually Conover Avenue per Hector County 91. Seven notices were mailed out. One protest was received. One approval was received. Those can be seen up on the screen. We'd like to take a minute to read those.
I just have a question, the first one, because I think that area has been fenced up forever. Is there a possibility of there being a capwell there or any other oil lines or gas lines running through there?
I will let the consultant answer that question. We did receive a phone call. Concern as well, but I approach staff. We do want to make note of the lots 1, 2, and 3 that don't meet the 50-foot requirement. That 50-foot width requirement is at the lot line, so they might have to remove one of those lots in order to meet that restriction or have the setback line be way farther back, leaving that third lot very, very limited to development for a single-family home. But to your question.
Did Mr.?
Okay, I wouldn't know again, this is a public hearing. Can I give you your name?
My name is Roberto Rito. I'm with Henry Rito, the consultant, and we are looking at that. There is, there is a well site that, it was a drill site, reserved drill site area for it. We have been in contact with the Rural Commission, and they did tell us that that well has been abandoned and capped. And so that's why, you know, he's wanting to develop it as a residential development. As far as the minimum width goal, we will address that. We are submitting water, sewer, and paving plans for the project. Our client is wanting to develop it as a residential development. So 1, 2, and 3, we'll take a look at that again to see if we just put two lots there or if we can move that back a little bit where it's still developable to place three lots on there. We're trying to maximize it, but he is aware that we may have, you know, have to do that. Other than that, if the site is contaminated, we haven't been notified by the Rural Commission and we are in contact with them. If it happens to be, then our client will go address the issue on, you know, mitigating that contamination and then go forward with that. The other comments, as far as Conover Drive being avenue, that's just a minor issue to recorrect, so not a big deal.
Any questions to the consultant? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience today that here is speaking in favor of or in opposition to this matter? Yes, we can forward those. Let's know what your.
My name is Paul Miller. I own the house at 36 block 14. It's going to, the one will be to the, to the north side. I know that there's a well capped off. My dad or one of my uncle's brothers can deal in that well for amicola. He said it was bleeding off the other wells his wife was condemned. The three lots, the three lots that are, the odd-shaped lots, they held into an alley, they held up to the street.
The plat does show, I'll just make that slide correction. The plat does show all of this as a street.
It's not.
And it's not developed as such, but it is plaid as a.
It's an alley on both sides.
You're talking about Fontana?
Fontana.
Fontana. It, they've got it drawn straight, that, that cul-de-sac curves and about, not quite half of the alley on the south side of my house would be, I guess, street. I don't know how they've been widening enough to put a 20-foot or 40-foot or however wide the street has to be on both of the, where the alleys are. Okay? There is or was some contamination found back when these were developed, the, on the three turn-in, left over the whole flat. Can't see the color. Okay, this lot right here. It's where you turn in to off the Conover, on the Corona Circle. The house on the southwest or southeast corner, they cut the plant grass and they ended up having to dig out about six foot deep all along the side of that house for oil that had been dumped in there, and it was a rig tie down in that area. I've owned the lot since 1974. I've been, my wife lived there for 35 years, and I'm moving back to my house here in the next three to six months, when my wife passed away. It is paying foreign taxes or cheaper from where I'm at. I don't, I don't, I don't care if they developed it. I just want it developed where, you know, the houses aren't opening up in an alley right next to my house, basically. What I think would be that kind of situation is put a cul-de-sac in there, kind of key shaped, like I showed you. They probably get like this, like this way.
Do you know? Can you get? Do you? Do you hire him? He's a designer.
I think that would be a better way to develop it versus trying to do the three lots way to open up in the alley. When I did, I was in building business for 55. I'd love to see it developed.
Just a little circle.
I'll just. Yep. I'd like, I'd like to see it developed, but I just don't know how, I mean, those are just, I've got, and I've got overpart. If they did the cul-de-sac like that, they could go in and do 40-foot lots, single lot line lots, like the fountains, and maybe get more lots and still, you know, make you build these bigger houses, but just may have to build them up instead of out and develop it all above Conover, is what I would suggest.
Mr. Miller, do you know where the cap well is located?
Right in the middle.
In the alley?
I don't know. The cap well is right in the middle of there. What they want to put is a subdivision there in the middle. Like I say, my uncle's brother, he taught, when we bought my lot, I talked to him, he said it would never be drilled again because it's a deal well. That's why I bought my lot. But anyway, it is right in the middle. It's a water injection well, it's a saltwater well bleeding off. It may have contamination under those lots, who knows? I mean, I didn't, you know, think about it back then, it's become, and it's something else. About 12, 15 years ago, I could have bought that drill site and a lot on the Alumina Street, developed off of 16th for $1,500 for both of them. And I talked to Wendell Campbell, which I got a commercial realtor, which Peacock knows him, and he got me in touch. I think that well was drilled originally by itself, that it, amicola inherited it. And what Wendell told me, and I called the local, and asked him if I found contamination on it, who would be responsible for cleaning it up? He said I would. So I said, no, thank you, and didn't buy it. I mean, it's nice or, I'd love to see it developed, but, you know, I'm just telling you what I know after living there, you know, owning a property, living there 35 years, going back, and I'd love to see it developed. And I think they could go in and do like a zero lot line and put, do like fountains with gutter, no curving, and not have a sidewalk, and it's still getting more room to build on, and you'll maybe get a lot, one or two more lots of them. That's just my suggestion. I mean, I hope to develop it. I just don't understand how you're going to open a cul-de-sac up into an alley.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You gave us a lot of information.
Okay, thank you.
Most of it's interesting. Is there anyone else in the audience today that is here speaking in favor of or in opposition to this matter? If not, then I'll close the public portion, turn the commission, and I know I have a question, some of you may have, some things have come to mind based on Mr. Miller's discussion. Anyone else have questions? Staff or consultant?
There hadn't been any environmental done on it?
There hasn't been any environmental done on it. We've just been in contact with the Rural Commission, and they haven't said anything about any contamination or not. And then they, if there is, like I said, our client will just have to go through mitigation to get that cleaned up, and he's aware of that.
Can I say one other thing?
Yes, sir.
Probably the stuff on top of the soil is leached out. The lot may be under the soil a few feet deep might be the problem like they found down on that corner lot.
Great, thank you, Paul. Have a question on the, the design on those three lots. You've got kind of a semi-circle running Fontana and the alley.
Yes, sir.
How is it going to work? It appears to me, the bold outline denotes that that's the addition. Is that portion, that semi-circle, is that we dedicate to the street by the way?
Yes, sir, that'd be dedicated to the street. What we initially were going to try to do is abandon the alley to the north of this property and the one to the west of this property. But we didn't get coordination with the landowners adjacent to that. The only way we could do that through the city is half of the alley would have to go to the adjacent property or the other half. Or if they didn't want it, they could put it all to our developer's side. But we didn't get any coordination on that, so we left the alleys there, and then we did put that cul-de-sac in with the thought that we could get those three lots in there. thought that we could get those three lots in there, but he is aware that if we don't do those three lots there, then we'll just get two lots out of, out of that little section. But all that part that, that we're showing onsite to be the cul-de-sac, that is going to all be paved, the portion of that alley to the north would also be paved, that way there'd be access to, to be able to drive around, to get onto the Fontana Street side. We did introduce a new alley, the, the alley that's in interior part to the south of our property, and down the middle, there is an easement to the south, but there's not an alley, so we went ahead and said, you know what, we're going to go ahead and open that up as a full-ledge alley, and that's kind of why we were wanting to trade off the west alley little section there, for that south section, but, it didn't happen, we still went ahead and, and did that alley, there is water in that portion there, and so that's kind of how we're going to loop the water from the north end to that south end, and finish that off, that also gives access for trash and, and all that pickup, so introduce that new alley, so he is losing some property on the interior, because we are putting these alleys in there, but, he was looking to do that. That center alley, we're actually going to extend the sewer from the north down to the south, if I recall right, or maybe the other direction, from the, from the south up to the north, and, and that's kind of why those alleys were introduced, for that reason, to give the easements and the access for, for utilities and for all that on the backside.
So, would the semicircle, would that be Fontana or Corona?
That would actually be, um, well, depending on what the staff says, maybe it's Corona, because it, it kind of there is right there, it's Corona.
Yeah, that's my problem.
Yes. Because, I guess really and truly, that's a U right in there, and so it shouldn't be Fontana and Corona anyways, because as it, as it is, it's, it's a U that comes around, so that should have all been the same name right there. It should have either been Fontana or Corona, all the way from University, all the way through that whole, whole street, because it's a U drive.
A question for staff, I guess, does, does staff have a problem with that, like, what we call the street, like, how's 911 going to find it?
The, cut.
The, the semicircle, like, is it Fontana or is it Corona?
It would be one or the other, somebody would make that decision, and, I don't know what the numbering is, but it'd probably match, it would be very different from, from the Corona, since it's east-west and versus the north-south, but it would be a difficult to, to figure out.
Maybe you could name it Fontana Court.
I have another question, staff. If, if we're really looking at increasing the frontage on, on the lots, and possibly going to two lots, are we really ready for this flat at this time? Would it be appropriate to go forward?
We are.
Issues that are unresolved.
They're not huge issues, really just the three lots that are on Fontana, that used to be.
But if they reduce it to two lots, that's not the plot that we're approving today. You're approved, my question.
Okay, I see.
And I'm begging you.
You're right, and, I'm not sure what would, to me, that doesn't seem like a very big difference to what we're seeing today, we're using three.
But if that's changed, then you would come back to us, right?
When we bring the, the final wouldn't be signed, the, the final plat, the mylar, would need to be approved by engineering, and it would not get, it wouldn't be approved if it didn't meet the minimum requirements. So it doesn't come to the plan of zoning commission again, because it is a replat, but that doesn't seem like a very si, big difference, whereas, something very, very big would constitute a whole other replat.
Well, I live two blocks east of that area, and that place has been an eyesore, the fence has been falling down, and it would be nice, like I said, if they could develop it and develop it safely, you would be, you would remove that eyesore from there, and make it a much, give it a much better look, nobody to ask about it.
And that was his idea anyways, for lots four, five, six, and seven, to just continue that residential development, and complete that street on that side.
Okay, let me interrupt you, we've already closed the public discussion, but I, I think this critical issue, that, that would have anybody object, if, if we let this gentleman come forward? Right, thank you.
Just as a point.
Can you give us your name?
Stan Piper.
Stan, okay.
Stan, Steve.
Stan, okay, okay.
Going from three to two would be less impacting, to go to two to three would be more impacting, so, if he gets approval on the front area with the three lot, all it would do is take the impact down, make it less numbers, of course, it'd cost him money, but, I don't see the community losing anything with it going to two lots, instead of three lots.
Yeah, my question is more procedural, rather than substantive. Okay. This point, I ask the commission, anyone has any thoughts that we need to talk about, any, any discussion? I think, by all concern about the possibility of contamination, whether it's an issue, of course, somebody talks about the plug well, I'll, I'll make a pick about Jessica McClure, 35 years old now. All right, that was discussion, we entertain a motion, one way or the other.
I don't really know how an issue that I'd make a motion so approved.
I second.
Everybody concludes with a second, all in favor, let me know, saying aye. Any opposed, same same, motion passes. We appreciate the comments from the community.
Sir.
Okay, now we got case file number 2022-19P, this is public hearing, consider approval of replat lot one, lot one, cover on condition, section 46, lot 42, T2S, TP Railway Service Ride, Conover, located at the intersection of Martin Street and Washington.
Thank you. The site is currently zoned, light industrial, and is currently occupied by light industrial use. Light, land use in the area consists of industrial development to the west, with a mix of vacant land and residential development to the north, south, and east. The applicants are Reynolds Real Estate Investments LLC and Pack Card Acquisitions 200 LLC owners. SW Howell is the agent, and the purpose of the preliminary plat is to create two lots for ownership and industrial development. Comments were sent to the consultant for review on April 12th, 2022. The consultant has addressed all of the comments, and the plat is ready for commission approval. Do you have any questions for staff?
And this is the last one, which is a public hearing, so, if there's anyone still in the audience that's here to speak in favor of, or in opposition to this matter, I'd ask that you come forward at this time. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public party, and turn the commission for discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case file 2022-19-P.
Second, all in favor, let me know, saying aye. Any opposed, same same. Okay, case file number 2022-20P, consider approval of Octavia Park 6 fouling, and a replat of 44.5 acres, lot 4, lot 26, Octavia Park 4 foul, this property is northeast of the intersection of North Navajo Avenue and West Spawne Road.
Thank you, the site is located in the City of Odessa's extraterritorial jurisdiction, does not have a zoning designation, and is currently vacant. Land use in the general area is largely residential. The applicants are Amaro Menina and Mario Marvez, owners, hyperservicing agent, the purpose of the replat is to create one lot for development and ownership purposes. Comments were sent to the consultant for review on April 12th. Commission actions are requested on the following item, Navajo Trail on the flat is actually north of Navajo Avenue, per Ector County 911. With that, staff recommend approval of that plat.
Any questions, staff? Any discussion, or ourselves? Anybody got a motion?
Make the motion, we approve case file 2022-20-P, the TJ is present.
Your second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same same. Going on, last matter, case file is 2022-08P, again, property is in extraterritorial jurisdiction, we're looking to approve the final plat of Salisbury Industrial, being a plat of 39.464 acres, section 30, lot 41, T2S, TP Railway Service Ride, this property is northeast of intersection of South John Vin Shepard Parkway, Boulard, and east half, east Interstate Highway 20.
Thank you. The site is in the City of Odessa's extraterritorial jurisdiction, with a section of the dedicated roadway roadway leading to the plat being within the city limits. The portion within the city limits is zoned light industrial, the portion in the county does not have a zoning designation. The property is vacant, land use in the general area includes industrial uses to the north and south, with vacant lands to the east and west. The applicant is Salisbury Industries LLC owner, new engineering, is the agent. The purpose of the replat is to create six lots for industrial development and ownership. Land and zoning commission gave preliminary plat approval to this request on March 17th of 2022, with the following conditions, consider approval of the plat being in plat of, I think my fonts, my formatting, I'm a little wonky there. They needed to change the Director of Public Works to re, to Core Director of Public Works, Director of Planning and Development Services, the Public Works signature block needed to be added, submit paving plans for the city's review acceptance, they needed to provide access to the 50.91 acre remainder tract to avoid land blocking the property for Public Works, they needed to add two control points per GIS, and give the private well a unique street name that adheres to Ector County addressing standards. These conditions have been met, and the final plat is ready for commission approval.
How'd you spell interstate?
Interstate? Did I spell it wrong?
I already did.
And, come back, please.
Okay, any, any discussion with commission? Questions, comments? Need one more motion?
Make the motion, we approve case file 2022, if you write that, be the TJ's present.
That's the motion I'm looking for, is your second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same same? Any other business?
No, your business.
Thank you. Good job, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Not representing the home, tell me if you're supporting.
Don't make a motion to adjourn.
Will you make a motion to adjourn?
I can't make a motion.
Oh.
But I, I'm in government, all in favor, go out the front door.